All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to this May 3, 2020, virtual meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano.
Go call. Mr. Alper.
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Mrs. Trick Scales.
Here.
And Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're getting better at that.
Notice of meeting, please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7th and April 29, 2020. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed in public meeting minutes of May 4?
A motion. Second.
All right.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
And President Alper.
Yes. Okay. Dr. Cascone Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Good evening, Board members, community members. Report tonight, a number of important and, you know, kind of exciting things happening here in West Orange. This week, we are acknowledging a number of different recognitions that we've been kind of posting on social media and raising awareness, and that's Allergy Awareness Week. And coincidentally, we will be, there is a first reading of a allergy, management of life-threatening allergy policy on tonight's agenda for first reading. And we look forward to, you know, hopefully adopting that policy as after a second reading at the June 1 Board Meeting. This is also Special Education Week, and later on in the report, I'll ask Mrs. Gogarty, who's in attendance, to provide some updates relative to operations in special education. And we acknowledge Special Education Week, and we, and through that acknowledgement, reinforce our vow to continue to create as inclusive spaces for our children in schools as possible and as within our abilities. Some perhaps lesser-known acknowledgements this week, but also worthy of noting are that this is Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, so we celebrate that and wish all of our Asian and Pacific Islander Americans the best this month, and we acknowledge all the accomplishments of those folks, both past and present in our society. And it is also National Police Week this week. And so a recognition and acknowledgement to all of our law enforcement officers out there, particularly at this time, as they're out on the front line and risking their health and, as they always do, life and limb to protect and serve our communities. And so we thank them and acknowledge them this week as well. Exciting, posted on social media, I'd like to publicly congratulate Sophia Ventura, fourth grader from Keller Elementary School for placing as one of 28 finalists out of 3,400 entries for the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey Design a Fourth Grade Folder Contest. So that's a tremendous accomplishment, and I couldn't think of a more worthwhile cause to champion as a young person than then Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey. As even as we're closed, and we'll talk a little bit about graduation in a moment, I just want to provide some updates on things that continue to happen. We, on this past Monday, we began our advanced placement testing, virtual advanced placement testing at the high school, which will continue through next Friday. And we are, we have 499 AP tests that are going to be taken at the high school over the course of the next couple of weeks. And so we wish all of our advanced placement students the best of luck as they sit for these exams in very different format from the way they've done in the past. And also that we have approximately 50% of our seniors have committed to either two- or four-year institutions of higher learning. 4% to date have committed to a branch of the military. We have approximately 2% of our students participating in the 18 to 21 program, and about 2% will be attending technical schools and/or work. It's important to note that the acceptance deadlines or the commitment deadline for many universities has been pushed back further from when it was in previous years. And so some of our students are still deliberating as to where they wish to attend in the fall. And just looking at some of the institutions that are top 5% are attending, it's a pretty impressive list. Princeton, University of Pennsylvania, Vassar, Duke, UCLA, Boston University, John Hopkins, George Washington, Boston College, Cornell, Carnegie Mellon, University of North Carolina, Chapel Hill. So really some outstanding institutions of higher learning and obviously a testament to those students, their families, and of course, the quality of our fine school system here in West Orange. So continuing along on the topic of our seniors, as you know, we've had two recent governor's orders which have come down the pike. One, obviously extending the school closures until June 30th, and then a more recent one which indicated that onsite in-person graduation ceremonies would not be permitted throughout June. So obviously, this has taken our planning in definitively in the direction of conducting a virtual graduation for our seniors. However, recognizing that we want to build in an opportunity above and beyond that, we've been combining our planning, which will necessitate seniors to come to the school with their parents to both drop off school property as well as to retrieve personal effects, and are planning an opportunity whereby seniors and their parents or guardians can come in cap and gown, dressed to the nines, and take a graduation picture in front of a background, be congratulated by myself and high school principal, high school administration, from a social distance, of course. And it would be at that time that they would also be given their diploma. So it'll be a nice opportunity closure to be recognized and to have a nice photo opportunity for themselves and for their families. And of course, we are going to be shortly identifying a date in late July, which we will put on the calendar as a tentative date during which we could potentially do an onsite ceremony, if in fact, we were permitted to do so under future state guidelines. Another idea which came out of another school district, which, after speaking preliminarily with the high school administration, there seemed to be some interest in would be perhaps also doing some form of senior reunion or banquet over Thanksgiving weekend that we would be looking to perhaps plan and organize along with the high school PTA or project graduation folks, which would not be in lieu of the graduation, it would be in addition to the graduation ceremonies. And so those are some of the acknowledgements that we're planning to try and make this as special occasion for our seniors as possible. That being said, that we know that we're out of school for the remainder of the year. We are aggressively planning now processes for and procedures for how we're going to ensure that in particular, students in fifth grade, in eighth grade, and in 12th grade have an opportunity to bring school property which they have to their schools, but also obtain personal effects. I should mention that I'm also speaking with the middle school principals and the elementary school principals to build in similar types of photographic opportunities for those students in the same way that we're doing it for high school, so that they can have some also measure of closure and celebratory opportunity with their families and their principal. We will obviously, the most important thing is to identify some dates so that we can get those to parents ASAP, so that they can plan accordingly with their own personal and professional calendars. We have yet to receive any kind of guidance from the state as to summer programs. So we are kind of contemporaneously planning for both an onsite and a virtual format for that, and we're hopeful that we'll have some guidance from the state within the next week or so as to whether summer programs will be permissible. If I had to say it now, I would suggest that that is probably not likely. But until we hear from the state, we can't definitively plan for one or the other necessarily. Additionally, when we talk about what we're doing day-to-day, and that really is our primary focus right now is in the next four to five weeks as we close out the school year, to ensure that we are, any blind spots that exist, any soft spots which we have noticed within our services are identified and are improved upon in the next four to five weeks. I understand, and a lot of feedback coming from parents and students, that we need to be more consistent in providing more interactive opportunities for our kids. There is active planning going on in that. I've recently communicated with the staff. And I am very hopeful and optimistic that we will see an increase in a surge in the use of those Google Meet Hangouts in order to provide more face-to-face interaction with students. And obviously, we continue to look at grading and assessment as we've maintained grades as opposed to a pass/fail on the secondary level, and thus are holding students accountable. We obviously need to hold ourselves accountable to providing the necessary degree of support for that. We've analyzed our grade distributions, comparing our grade distribution for this third marking period as compared to previous years. And we're seeing largely a similar distribution of grades with some exceptions. So that seems to indicate that the assessments and the adjustments that have been made on the fly are contributing to relatively reliable and valid indications of student achievement. On the elementary level, we are finalizing some additional specifications to add additional detail and clarity to that pass/fail option that was previously communicated to the parent community, on building an additional levels, if you will, that'll be more informative to both parents and students as to how the elementary students are performing as of the end of the school year. As far as, I'd just like to talk a little bit about food services. Obviously, now that we're at close for the remainder of the year, our focus on food services continues to be central. We continue to operate a fairly robust food pantry out of the Board of Education, and I'd like to publicly thank the Junior Air Force ROTC again for their ongoing donations, as well as all families and community members that have done that. The life, the Christian, the Holy Trinity Church, and working with MASHOS to really, to begin to expand upon what we're offering day-to-day, or at least on Fridays to our families, including unprepared foods like pasta and rice, so that they have some additional foodstuffs over the course of the weekend when they're not getting the daily drops from the school. But we continue to give out approximately 8,000 meals a week, and we are going to have another delivery of fresh fruits and vegetables this week as well in the schools that qualify through the grant which we have obtained. Just a final piece, and I'd be remiss if I didn't also recognize that this is Mental Health Awareness Month. I think, you know, this, at this time, you know, in particular, it's important to focus on this. It's important to realize that we need to de-stigmatize, you know, mental health needs. We need to recognize that we need to be supportive, we need to create an environment where all people feel comfortable coming forth with any challenges, you know, mental health challenges they might have. And to that end, you know, we have great resources, our guidance department under the direction of Director Cheryl Butler, have done a tremendous job of availing themselves and providing individualized, personalized support to students and families. And I would just encourage you that in particular for our students, we have student assistance counselors that are outstanding that are on the ready to support students in need. And so, you know, my, you know, I, my, my thoughts go out to all individuals who may be wrestling with mental health challenges at that time, to let you know that we as a community are with you, that you have a place to come for support, and please know that you can come and lean on us and our health professionals if you are in need of support. That is my report. And I would at this time turn it over to Mrs. Gogarty to prevent an update on the status of our operations in special services.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. So good evening to the Board of Education and the community. Thank you for having me this evening. As Dr. Cascone shared, I'm going to just provide a brief update specific to special education and how things are going with the school closures. As Dr. Cascone shared, it is New Jersey Special Education Week. We are trying to celebrate it across the district. We've challenged some of our staff members to find a quote that aligns with the theme of creating, learning, and growing, and post it in their home window and send us a picture. So we are collecting various amazing quotes that have been posted in our staff members' windows at home. In terms of the school closure, from an instructional standpoint, you know, special education teachers are really doing their best to ensure that the modifications and accommodations as outlined in student IAPs are being followed to the greatest extent possible. They're utilizing various modes of instruction, you know, based on the guidance that has put forth by the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. You know, our teachers are really doing their best to be accommodating and flexible based on the situation, you know, in addition to considering student and family needs at any given point in time. You know, with that being said, we have received parent feedback. You know, I would say it's varied. We've received very positive feedback where, you know, parents have been very grateful for the support and very thankful. And, you know, we've also received some concerns. You know, when we do receive a concern, either myself, the case manager, or Mrs. Ribeiro, who's the supervisor at the high school, we will immediately get in contact with the parent guardian and/or student. I've sat in several meetings just to kind of look at what additional supports we can put in place. You know, and as I previously shared, the teachers are really doing their best to provide that, you know, extra support if need be to students during this time. In terms of related services, on April 1, Governor Murphy signed a law permitting the temporary use of telepractice to deliver related services. So that really includes speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and counseling. As soon as that law was put into effect, we met with the related service providers to really shift them to providing virtual services. Parents and guardians of our in-district students were sent a letter on April 7th informing them of this, letting them know that the related service providers would be reaching out to them to schedule sessions. You know, parents were given the opportunity, if they so choose to opt their child out of the service, they just had to fill out a survey. Even if a student is being opted out of services, we are still providing activities that are aligned with the goals and objectives. So we're sending them to the student electronically. You know, I will say, Mrs. Ribeiro and I met with the related service providers about two weeks ago to just kind of check in and see how the virtual sessions were going, and the feedback was very positive. I think one of the areas of focus was really trying to increase the amount of participation, which they did know, you know, did increase that second week of implementation. So that seems to be going really well. Like I said, the feedback from the service providers was very positive with that. Our paraprofessionals are, we provide written guidance to them in terms of how they can support students. Certainly, you know, in consultation with the classroom teacher. But we have powers that are supporting teachers in Google Classroom with preparing assignments, activities, responding to student questions, providing comments on student work, assisting with the completion of assignments as well. We've also had powers that have been extremely helpful with translating at some of our child study team meetings and also serving as contact operators for the district. So they've been very helpful. As Dr. Cascone previously shared, we are still awaiting for guidance from the State Department of Education in terms of the summer programs or extended school year program. We are prepared either way, so we, you know, ultimately, if we are required to have an in-person ESY, we will be prepared to do that. And we're also prepared, you know, to provide a virtual ESY program as well. So once we receive that guidance, that will be communicated out to parents and guardians, and we will be working on those next steps. For our added district students, the school, the added district school, similar to what we're doing in the district, they have to develop school closure plans and provide them to the district. So many of them are, you know, again, similar to what we're doing using virtual instruction. Many of them have, if not all, have shifted to the virtual related services, similar to what we're doing. So once that executive order was passed by the governor, a lot of the added district schools updated their school closure plan to reflect that as well. I do have to give a shout out to our Special Education Parent Advisory Council and PASS as well. Mrs. Ribeiro and I meet with our WOCPAP co-chairs every other week. We have a meeting usually on a Monday or Tuesday later in the day. I've also been in communication, I would say, on a weekly basis, if not more, with Mr. Rahe from WOPASS. So, you know, they've both been very helpful in terms of, you know, sharing ideas, giving me any feedback, you know, so we can best support the students and their families.
All right. Great. Any board questions for Kristin?
Thank you, Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald. Thank you so much, because I was just wondering how our special needs youngsters were doing, and I know that we had started the telepractice, but I really wondered how that worked. So when you have made contact with parents and they've had a concern, what are some of the concerns that you're hearing from the parents?
I would say initially, early on, was just the ability to really have like that one-to-one time with the teacher. You know, I can share an example. I participated in one meeting with the parent where the teachers were involved, and we just arranged, you know, kind of a weekly meeting with that student and the teacher, and that really helped just to kind of do a check-in and have that face-to-face and one-to-one. So, you know, we've kind of been troubleshooting the, you know, just based on also some parents, you know, have shared that they're overwhelmed at home with, you know, having to work, manage the work with their students. So we've been trying to help, you know, just find a balance as well.
Okay. So how often are the teachers actually connecting with their youngsters, their students?
Yeah, the teacher connection varies. So, you know, some teachers are using Google Meets and they're doing like a classroom check-in. Some have office hours where the students can sign up, you know, and have that one-to-one interaction with them. We have some teachers who have utilized a more, I would say, at the secondary level, particularly at the high school, where students can ask questions and they'll create like a video response to the questions. Or they'll do like a full Q and A and give examples of what the questions are, like kind of giving them feedback from an instructional standpoint. So it really varies. I can't say it's every day, you know, with every student, but, you know, from teacher class to class, and also depending upon the level and, you know, the students in the classroom, if they, you know, have the ability to connect with the teacher one-to-one as well.
Right. And I'm really happy that you can continue with WOCPAP and the PASS leadership.
Yes, they've been very helpful.
Very good connection. Kind of keep their, keeping their finger on the pulse. Great. Thank you.
Yes, they've been helpful. You're welcome.
Anyone else from the board?
I just wanted to thank you first of all for everything you're doing under these circumstances. One of the concerns I had certainly was, you know, how we were going to continue education for our special needs students. I just wanted to know if with the telepractice, were there additional, how does that work? Were there additional technology needs that you had to fulfill for that? Or is it a one-on-one with the students a couple times, once or twice a week? Or aligned with their IEP or 504?
Yes. So that's the related services, we're following the IEP. So if a student's IEP indicates, you know, two times a week, 30 minutes in a group, they're being serviced. They're being offered that service two times a week, 30 minutes in a group. If it's individual, same thing. So the therapists are really adhering to, you know, whatever the IEP is, and the students on their caseload, they're being provided with those services.
Oh, great.
And they're using, I know you had asked about the platform. Many of them are using Google Classroom and some are using Google Hangouts Meet, so we're still within the Google platform.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Are IEP meetings proceeding via Google Meet? Or are we, I know we're heading into kind of traditional IEP season right now.
Yes, the IEP meetings from the very beginning have been held via Google Hangouts Meet as well. So we have some parents that will use the conference call, and they call in, and then others will do the face-to-face meeting. But we offer, you know, the Google Meets for the parent and the IEP meeting.
Excellent. All right. Ms. Merklinger or Mr. Rothstein, anything? All right. We'll move on then. Questions from the public on agenda items only. You'll be able to follow the instructions on your screen to raise your hand, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. When you do, just be sure to let us know your name and your address.
Okay, thank you. As Mr. Alper said, there is a raise your hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, we have a few call-in listeners, you'd like to raise your hand, you just dial *9. And we do take the order that the hand was raised, and you can raise your hand at any time. You don't have to wait for the next person to finish speaking. So first, we have here Nicole Rufo. If you can follow your prompt on your screen, please. Nicole, can you hear?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Nicole Rufo for Overlook Avenue, and I have some little people who would like to speak before me.
My name is Andrew, and I am in sixth grade. Thank you for being a partner in allergy awareness. One in 13 children have a food allergy. That's two per classroom and three in my family. Hi, my name is Jack, and I'm in fourth grade. Thank you for bringing awareness to food allergies. The top nine allergens are eggs, milk, peanuts, tree nuts, soy, wheat, shellfish, fish, and sesame.
Hi, my name is Natalie, and I'm in second grade. Thank you for taking the time to learn about food allergies. Every three minutes, a food allergy sends someone to the hospital.
Thank you. So my three children just wanted to share their appreciation for the administration and the Board of Education for acknowledging Allergy Awareness Week, which is this week from May 10 to May 16. The allergy community has been asking for this acknowledgement, and we are just very thankful that you have delivered and educated our large district. The social media posts, the health lessons that are being centered on food allergy awareness, and the posts from our elementary principals have been wonderful. Many allergy families have been reaching out to me and feeling heard. And then even beyond our asks, Dr. Cascone reached out to Betsy Stevens with Yoga Playhouse to incorporate food allergy management into the mindfulness minute of the week. And we thank Dr. Cascone for acknowledging how important mental health awareness is, especially for food allergy families. So I just wanted to thank you, and also thanking you for, Dr. Cascone, for the letter that you sent out to the families. This, I guess it was yesterday, losing track of days, but it was just very thoughtful. And yes, we are going through some very difficult times, and your encouragement was appreciated. These times are reminding me when I had my twins and when I had my children diagnosed with food allergies where it feels almost impossible, but we can do hard things, and I thank you for your encouragement. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tez Ruro, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes. Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. Pleading everyone's time. One of the few cues that came up when we started e-learning is the gap in technology and security. And I want to thank the district for working swiftly and efficiently to bridge that gap. I just heard on the report from Special Education that when administrating education to our special education population, that there's language gap as well. I'm just wondering if there's been any families who are having difficulty finding a translator for any language so that if perhaps, you know, some of us are listening, we can raise our hands to help with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Kristin Russell, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi. Can you hear us?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I also want to echo what Nicole said in terms of, I'm grateful for the allergy awareness stuff that's happening right now. I love all the posts. I think that is great. So I just want to thank everybody for that, for everybody who's had a hand in that. You know, that is something we appreciate. We are an allergy family. And I also want to acknowledge like that I am grateful that we're looking into having a little bit more face-to-face with teachers. My kids have not had much of that. We are starting to have more, but that is something that I think, since this is being prolonged, they really need. I know my first grader is really, really kind of suffering from missing a lot of that. So I think that is a piece that's important to incorporate. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else at this time? Again, the raise your hand feature is at the bottom of your screen. If you don't see it, if you just hover your mouse down, it should pop up on the bottom for you. And if you are one of our call-ins, it is *9. Okay. Ms. President, we have no other hands raised at this time.
All right. Ms. Russell, Ms. Rufo, Andrew, Jack, Natalie, thank you very much for your comments. You know, on allergies, interestingly enough, I can tell you it's in the curriculum right now too, because my eighth grader today, when he was doing his work, mentioned in passing something about the 1 in 13 number. It was for an assignment that he was working on. So glad to see it's making its way through and that we're able to make a difference there. Dr. Cascone, yeah, and Ms. Russell, on the Google meetups, I think we're all hoping to see a lot more of those. I think it's, you know, wonderful when they're able to make those happen. Dr. Cascone, if you have anything on languages with Ms. Ruro's question to offer?
Right. I am not aware of any challenges in that regard. I think that in the event that we have a family that requires, you know, translating services, you know, there's a certain degree of, you know, obligation. that requires, uh, you know, translating services, um, you know, there's a certain degree of, you know, of, of obligation on the part of the school district to ensure that, that we get that obviously for some of our more commonly spoken languages, that's, that's relatively easy. But, you know, if we needed to do a, so, you know, a, you know, um, an IEP meeting and, you know, in Urdu or something of that nature, it would be our responsibility to, to secure them. We do have, uh, if we don't have that expertise on staff, we do partner with, uh, with third parties to do that. I would like to just follow up a couple of things, Mr. Alper, if you would allow. Um, so I, I'd also like to, um, um, thank you, uh, Ruffo family. I know, uh, this is old hat for you after you went down to Washington and, you know, advocated on Capitol Hill. So this must seem like a small stage for you, but we, we appreciate you coming out and, and we're happy to, 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 to pick up that banner and run with it for you and all the other folks who, kids and folks who, um, who, who deal with life-threatening allergies. I'd also like, I have to give the Ruffo family a shout out because I follow you on Instagram. I follow your new, your new account on Instagram and Twitter. And, uh, just been, been amazed by all the, the, uh, been going on the 50 states tour with you. And, uh, so some pretty amazing stuff there. Real proud of the kids there and, uh, you know, going above and beyond with your learning. And, and also I want to thank the girls for, uh, the handwritten notes. I'm not sure if you got my card back, um, but thank you for that. It was very nice to receive a personal handwritten note, uh, from, uh, second graders. I don't get too many of those as the superintendent, so I appreciate that. And Ms. Russell, I would just like to publicly acknowledge that I, I have, I have an email in my inbox from you, which, uh, you know, I have to publicly acknowledge I have not gotten back to in 24 hours. So I do owe you a response on that, but I can tell you that I have been considering the feedback that you've presented in that email and it is absolutely, uh, driving yours along with feedback we receive from other parents is definitely driving and informing our thought process and our planning in the next several weeks. So I appreciate that and, uh, and, um, I'm absolutely on top of that. For you and other parents who have expressed, uh, that feedback and that, that interest and need. That's all for me, Ms. Alper.
All right. Great. Um, up next, we're going to have first readings of some new board policies and, uh, Ms. Merklinger, Ms. Trigscals. I'm not sure if one of you wants to, uh, talk to this bit before we make a motion or not, but the gist of it is, I think folks know by now, as we've been switching our policies over, it takes a while. There's a lot of policies out there and we're moving from one provider, New Jersey School Boards Association to Strauss Esme. So as part of that process, we, uh, have divided the policies up into groups. Uh, the first group that we're working on right now and over the summer are policies that are mandated, that the state requires you to have. You're not really permitted to make many, if any, changes to. So, uh, that's what we're dealing with today. So we're going to introduce these on first reading today. They'll then be posted, I believe, tonight to the, or tomorrow, but certainly soon to the district website where there's a form that you can easily access the public to comment on those policies. And then, uh, you know, there'll be adjustments and there'll be a second reading at a future meeting. If either of you would like to expand upon that, please feel free. Correct me if I got anything wrong.
That was perfect, uh, President Alper. Um, I just wanted to add that we're following the same process, um, for the remainder of the, um, policies. We broke them down into four categories. So this is the first one. Uh, as you said, these are mandated. So there's virtually no wiggle room, um, for districts. Um, they are mandated both by the legislature and the New Jersey Department of Ed, as well as, excuse me, the State Board of Ed. And so, um, Dr. Cascone has set up a nice schedule for us and if we stick to our schedule, we should be completed and ready to post officially online by September.
And I would just add, um, that, you know, the good thing about having these policies all laid out and for us is that surprisingly, there's actually more on our West Orange, um, district site. Um, it does take a little bit of finding to do. It's not that easy typing in keywords, but I will tell you that a lot of the mandated policies actually are found on our website. So that's a good thing. Um, and we do have some, um, just in our, our quick look so far, um, a lot of the policies that we have adopted do have some, um, West Orange, uh, uniqueness to them that will look to work with Strauss Esme to incorporate into those mandated policies. But I would just, you know, encourage the public to take a look at, um, the mandated policies once they're posted this evening or this week. Um, and definitely provide your input. Um, that's always helpful for us and, you know, we look forward to getting these adopted, uh, at the next reading.
Mr. Alper, I, I would just add that we thank you, Ms. Merklinger and Ms. Trigscals. Say they've, um, you know, uh, Ms. Trigscals, Mrs. Merklinger, uh, serve on the, the, the policy committee. Um, and, um, it's been, um, it's been great working with them. They've done an excellent job of just serving as, you know, kind of a liaison between the administration and, and the board. Um, and have really, you know, pushed, you know, responsibly pushed the pace to, um, to exercise our due diligence, gets these done. But I would just add that we do have a policy work session on May 24th. That'll be a public policy work session. Um, so that is another opportunity. Um, if you had feedback which you, you wish to bring forward relative to any of the policies, that would be an opportunity for you both to be privy to the public conversation about those policies and also to bring forth any feedback that you might have relative to them.
Great. All right. Uh, may I have a motion for the first reading of these board policies?
I'll motion.
Second?
All right. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
You're muted, Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Sorry.
Okay.
Muted. Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yeah.
President, President Alper?
Yes. All right. Uh, next up, personnel, uh, may I have a motion for items one through four?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? I'll highlight a couple of retirements real fast. Julie Wolf, Mount Pleasant, uh, 24 years, fourth grade teacher there. And Erin McCarthy, who my son Finn had, uh, five years ago for third grade, who's, uh, leaving the district. She'll be missed, Erin McCarthy Wallace now. Sorry, but, uh, yeah, she was a great teacher. That was a good year. All right. Uh, Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mr. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Up next, uh, curriculum and instruction, item one. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Uh, Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Next, uh, finance, special services, items one and two, and business office items one through nine. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And seconded.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. Up next, public comment, any topic at all. Um, again, follow the instructions, raise your hand. You'll have three minutes. Again, just let us know your name and address.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. At this time, if anyone would like to speak on anything, can you use that raise your hand feature? And for our call-in users, it's star nine. We have no one in the audience raising their hand.
We'll give that a few seconds, just in case anybody's, uh,
No problem.
All right. Continuing to see none.
Actually, oh, right in, right in the last.
Right under the line.
We have listed as Carol Anne. If you can follow the prompts on your screen, please?
Hi, it's Caroline Holland, uh, 71 Lawrence Avenue. Sorry, this is only my second Zoom, so I couldn't find the right button. I just wanted to, uh, I was just texting with another mom and we both are very concerned about the clothing drive being held at the high school on Friday. We are still under stay-at-home orders and we're just concerned about the safety. It gives a mixed message. We're told not to use school grounds and yet school grounds are being used. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And?
Anyone further?
Anyone else? Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Closing that section out. Dr. Cascone, anything?
No, I think I'm good for now.
All right. Um, our board member reports. Who would you like to start with? Mr. Rothstein? Anything?
I thought for sure that, uh, this time you would start with someone else. Um, it, it just, uh, just one thing very briefly, just, uh, the, uh, the policy first reading that we're going through, looking through all of these policies, um, uh, from Strauss Esme to adopt. Uh, this is really one of the primary functions of, of a school board. And, um, it's really, uh, I can't say we're scratching the surface. I feel in some ways like I'm drowning beneath the surface of this, but it's really an incredible opportunity and really a great exercise. Um, I feel like so much that I thought I understood about how schools are organized and how they're managed, uh, the level of detail and the depth of understanding that comes from really reading these, um, policies in detail and writing down questions about each of them, uh, is just really enhancing it so much. And, uh, I really view it as not just a responsibility of the school board, but of, um, you know, concerned parents everywhere and hope that, uh, people on the call will take the opportunity to go to the website, view the policies. There's an awful lot of them and it's a lot of reading, but jump in somewhere and read something. I think that this is a really good thing for all of us to know more about, uh, about the functioning of our schools. And that's it.
Definitely. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Trigscals?
All right. Yes. And, uh, good evening, everyone who has joined us today. We're happy to have you. Mr. Rothstein, just talking about the policies, I just want to dovetail on that, that for most of the mandated policies, there are also mandated regulations. Um, the board does not technically approve the regulations. And again, I'll just say for the public's benefit, the regulations, the policy is the what? And the regulations constitute the how. So the policies belong to the board and the regulations belong to the administration as far as implementation. So we're, we're doing a lot, a lot of work in a short amount of time. So thank you again to my, my colleagues. I heard a quote today and unfortunately I, I didn't get the name of the person, um, who gave the quote, but it's in the midst of difficulty lies opportunity. And that really resonated with me as I think about what we're going through and, you know, the public schools, the public school model has been virtually the same since its inception. Um, you have a teacher and kids go there to the teacher. Uh, this pandemic has, has changed everything. Um, and I really believe that, um, as time goes on, we're going to find ourselves, um, looking at education being delivered in a totally different manner and that we will be fostering, uh, continuous innovation using technology. I mean, we're, we're finding things that we can do that we would never have tried, um, if we weren't forced to do it. And so I'm very optimistic and enthusiastic that, um, for the future, that, that we're going to be doing things differently with our students. Looking at seniors and, and options for seniors. Um, so I think this is a perfect time as we move forward to look at how we are delivering education to our youngsters. And I know that that's going to happen on the, on the State Department level as well. I just wanted to, I was going to ask about the food service and, uh, thank you, Dr. Cascone, for giving us an update on that. Eight thousand meals weekly. I, I can't even imagine that. I, I, I can't even wrap my head around that. Cooking one a day is like a big deal for me, so I, I, I can't put that in, in perspective. Eight thousand meals in a week. So our, our boys and girls are so fortunate that we're able to continue to provide nutritious meals for them. So a shout out to, um, Machio for keeping that going. And again, I wanted to, uh, thank Ms. Gogarty Fitzgerald, um, for staying on top of our students whose needs are very, very special. And, um, I really wanted to know that we were doing everything that we're obligated to do and required to do to meet their needs. And if there are any parents out there, um, I just want to say to you, if, if you need additional support, if you don't think that your child is getting what he or she needs, please reach out. Please reach out to Mrs. Fitzgerald and let her know so that she can expedite the, the special needs. And I just read that we lost one of our fellow, um, board members in the state, a Dr. Kenneth Conti, who was a member of the Garfield Board of Ed, and he died due to complications of COVID-19 on April 23rd. And so I would just like to ask Mr. Alper, if you think it's appropriate that our board, um, reach out to the Garfield Board of Ed and extend our condolences.
Absolutely. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Merklinger?
Hi, everyone. Um, I just want to kind of piggyback off of what Terry mentioned. Um, you know, we're, we're being called to teach, uh, you know, to educate our students in different manners than what we're used to, you know, the brick and mortar. But I also want to recognize that, you know, our teachers and our staff and administration are trying to keep things as normal as possible for our students and keep some sort of, you know, um, regularity to, to what's been going on. So I just wanted to recognize, um, a lot of our spring sports coaches who are continuing to have, um, at West Orange High School, they're holding Zoom meetings, uh, weekly with their teams. Um, I know lacrosse and baseball have been doing this. And so, um, just to kind of bring some normalcy to those athletes who are missing their spring season and, um, keeping the positive vibe going. So I just want to thank those coaches and recognize them. Um, the student council at West Orange High School is having their elections. And if anyone checked out their Instagram posts, they're really creative students with how to get kids to vote or, you know, get everyone involved in voting, um, for the high school's, uh, student council. So, um, I just want to recognize all those students that are, uh, participating in that and, um, congratulate them for, you know, a job well done, you know, in these times and not being in school and, and getting the word out to vote for student council. Um, it's an important part of this high school and, uh, look forward to hearing the results. Um, so let's see. Um, I don't know if anyone has seen lately, but, or heard, um, but in addition to the shop local and supporting our local businesses who are continuing to donate, um, to our students and to, uh, members of our community, they're also doing the West Orange strong, uh, gear and, um, it raised $17,000 for the Mayor Sunshine Club, our funds. But the current, um, I guess the, the current session are, are, uh, sweatshirts and T-shirts that are available in new colors are going out to support the class of 2020. So I encourage folks to, um, purchase, you know, as many shirts and sweatshirts and hoodies as you can. It does support the class of 2020. So hopefully you're getting your pink and white, uh, football gear and whatnot. For those that didn't see, our kindergarten orientation has been postponed, but, um, more to come on that and more information will become available. I also want to recognize, uh, the Mount Pleasant PTA who donated the funds from their Teacher Appreciation Week to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry. I thought that was a really great thing and really positive thing to do and supporting our community. Um, and I think that's one of the great things about West Orange is that folks are always willing to help each other out and look for ways to help one another. So, uh, just keep up the positive vibes. Um, I also want to recognize our sixth grade, um, teacher, social studies teacher, Ms. Romanjuk, who was featured today on, uh, NJ, uh, NJ TV Learning Live. Um, so congratulations to her. My son had her for, uh, social studies at Edison and what fell in love with Hamilton after her class. So, uh, congratulations to Ms. Romanjuk for that. Sandra Guerrero was the first, uh, female to commit to New Jersey City University for wrestling as a female wrestler. So congratulations to Sandra. She's bringing a lot of, um, great, uh, publicity to West Orange, but also, um, on the forefront of women in sports. So congratulations to Sandra. Um, and I also, uh, Dr. Cascone already, um, mentioned, uh, Sophia Ventura this, earlier today, but, um, just congratulations to Sophia. but just congratulations to Sophia on being named the finalist for the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey. And Sophie Bennett is one of our students in the district and she's using her free time right now to make masks. The town council recognized her last evening. And so I just want to recognize her from the Board of Education. She's making masks for folks in town, especially our seniors who may not be able to get out to get them. And just want to recognize her for that. And I just want to continue to thank our West Orange Fire Department, our Police Department, our DPW and EMS for all their work on continuing to keep us safe. And to Dr. Cascone for the constant communication. I think it's been uplifting for folks in town to really see the transparency. That's one of the goals that the board had put out there this year is that we want to ensure our communication was more transparent and more efficient and effective. And I think Dr. Cascone has done a great job of getting the word out. As information's becoming available, we're all in this uncertain place. And so to the extent that we can get information out, I really appreciate what Dr. Cascone has been doing. So that is my update. Everyone stay positive and that's it.
Thank you. Excellent. Ms. Tony Cliff?
Thank you. I wanted to echo some of the comments of Mr. Rothstein about the policy and being a new board member. It's the best way to really immerse yourself in the work of being a board member. When we were at our training, our Governance One training in October, somebody had said, you know, for every item on your agenda, you should be looking for the corresponding policy that goes with that. And that was really great advice. So we've been trying to, I know I've been trying to do that every time we get an agenda to look at that. So it's exciting work. It's a lot of reading, but it's definitely helping me to be a better board member. And I think everybody, everything I had on my list for my report has already been mentioned, but I did say I would give Sophia Ventura from Kelly a shout out who had been selected as a finalist for the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey in the Folder Contest. And the name of her project was called Drugs Are Never in Style. So she's a stylish young girl and super proud of you for your accomplishment. The other thing that we have going on besides National Food Allergy Week is also it is Get Caught Reading Month. So I know a lot of the schools are doing social media posts and kids are taking pictures of themselves and sending them into their library media specialists. So I look forward to seeing those compilations coming through. So thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Thanks.
All right. Um, yeah, on policy, you know, I think one of the things they taught us in board school is, you know, if your policy is solid, you, you don't have to reinvent the wheel every time because you can just look at the policy and see what the policy says whenever a question comes up. And, you know, to even greater extent, the regulations when they exist. So, you know, for, for Ms. Trigscals and Ms. Merklinger, you know, I think not everyone has the mindset, it's not the word I'm looking for, but the, the ability really to, to, to deal with policy and to focus on policy and, and to do policy. And it's greatly appreciated because, you know, it's a critically important board function. And I'm glad you're both doing it. Seniors, we will not forget you. You have not been forgotten. Stay tuned and good luck on APs. And that's all I've got. Dr. Cascone, do you have anything to close with?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to, I meant to just respond to a member of the public who spoke about the, the clothing drop. I, I would just like to, just to state that obviously, you know, we would never endorse any event on school property for which we hadn't received, you know, prior clearance or authorization. And, you know, I had, after the last go-around, when it was originally planned, it was canceled. You know, I did reach out to Local Office of Emergency Management, the mayor. And they, their perspective on it was that they had absolutely no problem with it being an unmanned drop, if you will, provided obviously that there was not congregations. And we will, you know, work with the town or within our own resources to ensure that, that the space is monitored to prevent that from happening. So I think we're in good shape there, provided that we're preventing congregations of folks.
Good. I appreciate that. That sounds like a good way to go. All right, with that, our next meeting of the board at all is May 27th, 5:30 PM for a policy work session. Our next regularly scheduled public meeting of the board is June 1st, 7:30 PM, public session. So see you then. Get home or stay home safe and we're adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night. This is just a reminder that this meeting ends. It ends for both the panelists and the audience that's joining us. And there's no further discussion during this meeting. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.